All right, I got to order this formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00 AM on April 24th. And I'll lead us in the flakes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item C is our calendar session. Do we have any additions to make or subtractions?
Big staff, you know, we're all together all week.
D's public comment, if there's anybody in the audience that needs to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, fill out tan pieces of paper. If you're online, go ahead and raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, moving on. E is department updates. Oh, back to public comments, there was one that was emailed, I want to make sure that everybody saw that.
Yep.
It was put into the record. E is department updates. And joining us today is Shane Hoffman with our IT department. Welcome Shane, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm pleased to present the information technology update. So let's begin, we'll start with security. So here are some examples. Testing, testing. All right. Thank you, Ken. So the following are some examples of what we've done for security since the last update. So our senior network administrator, Chris Roberts, he's been working on network segmentation, continues to work on that, and that's basically just segmenting traffic so it's more restrictive in terms of where it can go. And he's added more restrictions where vendors and contractors, what resources they can access. This is a large project and just kind of a continued effort that we strive to get better and better with, you know, with the traffic restrictions. Working with our outside vendor for our yearly penetration tests. And penetration test is really just simulated cyber attack to look for vulnerabilities and weaknesses and the potential impact of those weaknesses. And then began the rollout of better network access control. We've worked with a vendor to integrate two cybersecurity, two existing cybersecurity tools to give us better correlation of security events. And then, of course, our cybersecurity training that we're all familiar with, know before. So I was going to just review some numbers over the past year. So our click rate, fish prone, I guess, if you want to call it, is eight percent. Our last campaign was 11.3%. Industry average for a government entity our size is four percent. So we're double. So we talked about this at the department head.
I have not seen my name on that list, by the way. So I think I've been doing pretty good.
I always get one from Derek who shames me and I similarly shame him.
Nice. Just for clarity for the audience, we will get lists. If you make the list, it's public knowledge that you've clicked on the wrong thing and then you probably after that you get a know before you click email for education purposes.
Shane, I think your next test needs to include like road equipment or farm equipment.
There you go.
I will say my email was hijacked and used in combination with a Linfield, some Linfield event within the last couple of weeks.
Ah, interesting.
Anyway.
Not surprising. But yeah, anyway, we probably need to figure that one out. We had some good talks at our department head meeting the other day, the department heads were very helpful presenting some ideas. So probably we should have some more discussions on that to figure out how to get that number down. Windows update and patching, of course, important to resolve any security flaws that we might have and reviewing security logs and taking any remedial action required. As always, I'd be more than happy to discuss one-on-one more details of our security posture if you so choose. And I do want to say special thanks to John and Chris, they do a great job keeping us safe and continue to improve our security posture, so I appreciate the work that they do. So on to some projects now. So we replaced some of our networking core infrastructure, that's just part of our normal lifecycle replacement program. We upgraded some HHS connections, so they're a little more bandwidth and really not a lot more money in some cases, some cost savings. So that was a good find. We upgraded our virtual infrastructure to the latest current version of software. And we have a new product, it gives us ability to look for file folder permissions and yeah, basically for files and folders. And one would think that's easy, but previously it was a very laborious process and it was really hard to get the whole picture. And so we found a tool that we can use that can help us and it's like $750 a year. And for probably the last four or five years, we have a vendor every year that shows us this product is about $100,000. It does the same thing. It does a lot more, but we found that we really just need that one feature and now we can get it for like $750 per year. So thank you to John Burns for that find. That was a, that was a great find. So yeah, that's working out well. Let's see, ACM, which is our Motorola Access Control Server, we've got that upgraded to the newest version. And then we continue to work with maintenance and departments to roll that out as our county standard. We've done a lot of work with additional and replacement cameras for multiple HHS sites in transit as well as NVRs, network video recorders. Our new servers, we're deploying now with Windows Server 2025, which offers better performance and more security features. And we've also made some changes to our SQL Server configurations to increase performance and reliability. And thank you to John for that one. And SQL Server is kind of the mainstay database that we use a lot for all our, a lot of our internal data and information. We continue to assist departments with the move to the new building. Windows 11, so we need to have that, everybody upgraded to Windows 11 by October 2025. Overall, we're looking really good. We're working closely right now with the Sheriff's Office Jail and Emergency Management to get their devices upgraded. And aside from that, the rest of the county has been pretty much upgraded. There's a few left that will get Windows 11 as part of their normal replacement before October 2025. So overall, we're looking good and we've got a good plan and we're monitoring it week to week to make sure we stay on track with the Sheriff's Department and they're being very helpful and the sheriff's been helping out a lot, so I really appreciate that. Let's see, membership in the RMS Work Group, so that's basically software to help the sheriff manage their enforcement operations. And that's a joint venture project with the city, Y Combinator County, Rule Dever, he attends our meetings regularly. And then Nicole Height from the Sheriff's Office, she's kind of the internal project manager for that project. Our programmers, they've been working on journal integrations into Oracle, working with HR on the Affordable Care Act reporting, working on streamlining and optimizing some database scripts for the tax assessor processes, excuse me, custom Oracle reports creation. And then they worked on some Excel based reports to pull legacy GEMS information since GEMS is going away. We worked with the jail to replace their current identification cards with a wristband, if you will. Historical data migrations from the old county website to Civic Plus. New commissary services implementation. We're working on a new civil system implementation and that just basically tracks service and court requirements for various documents. We got a software package from Washington County and we're currently in the process of working with the Sheriff's Office implementing that. We have a dedicated senior programmer analyst for Health and Human Services. We also hired a new senior programmer analyst in January, James Holiday. James is already making a big impact. In fact, he has built a new intranet site that will be hosted internally and it has a lot of cool features, much more so than the old site. Admin's actually going to get a glimpse of that tomorrow to see what it's going to look like. If we hosted that site externally, it was going to cost about 20,000 a year annually. So by bringing it in-house, it's just our time to set it up and we're going to manage it in-house and so we won't have that, that cost. One of the other things we've been focused on is providing programmer redundancy, especially for HHS and all departments as much as possible. You know, we've started that a few years ago and where it really helped is we just had a retirement in my office in November when Todd Pettijohn retired. And we really haven't missed a beat. Todd's obviously missed, but at the same time, because we've been, you know, having that redundancy for the last couple of years, we have people that can actually jump in and help out. So we're not, we're not going to have too big of a bump in the road, if you will. So we were really focused on that, trying to make sure we can, we have that cross coverage. And I want, thank you to Byron, James, Dan and Robert for all the work that they do. They really do provide great programming expertise and great customer service. The next section I wanted to talk about was cost savings. So we've been working with accounting to provide read access to GEMS and we've actually cut off access to GEMS. Everybody has to use these Excel based reports to get information out if they need historical information. And that's going to be able to save us $52,000 a year, so that'll be nice. There's also another product that is used with GEMS and it's also used with the civil system. And because we're moving to a new civil system, we can get rid of this product and that's another $7,600 per year. $16,000 in savings by removing some subscriptions that we looked at, we just really weren't getting a lot of benefit from. Thank you to Chris for that find. We replaced our backup storage solution with a cheaper alternative. And we're going to recognize savings of about 8,000 over two years and a savings of 92,000 over five years. And so thank you, John, for that find. So the total cost savings that we'll recognize is about $88,000, which is pretty good, pretty cool. I recently, a couple of months ago, had a meeting with our Verizon rep who discovered we were on some outdated plans. So I sent an email out to all departments to get them to engage with our rep and try to change plans and reduce our expenditures. And I had a meeting with them last week and I found out that our total monthly savings now for our Verizon is $4,485 per month or $53,830 annually. I want to thank all departments for their engagement with Verizon. Everybody, every department stepped up and worked with them to help us recognize that. So that's a thank you to everybody for their work. And I also want to say a special thank you to Camille Tanaka because HHS has a lot of those, a lot of the phones and she had to do a lot of work to get their plans in order and she did it and did a great job. So thank you, Camille. And let's see, our work and project tickets. Let's see, so we'll look from March 1st, 2024 to March 1st, 2025. We had 7,090 tickets and we closed 7,039 tickets. Honorable mention to Help Desk who closed 2,297 tickets. Thank you, Diane and Delva. And Desktop Support closed 3,549 tickets. Thank you, Rule, Jaime and Brian. And that's all I got for you.
Fantastic, thank you. And just since you were giving thank yous and shout outs, I just want to let you know that through the whole, oh, my move and transition that we really do appreciate how seems very smooth that those moves go far as like IT. And I did have Derek reach out to me this morning and just to pile on the thank yous of how great you and your team are and how even your own IT department transition, which by the way, do you like the new space and everybody's getting settled in good or?
Everybody loves it. We're very thankful. I thank you very much for the space. I hope the citizens recognize the benefit and are getting benefit of having, you know, as more departments move in, having everybody there, it's easier to get around. So yeah, thank you very much. We enjoy it.
Fantastic, yep.
Shane, what was that total amount, the total amount you were saying was, is it 88,000 all told?
Right now, yeah. If I, and I took that 92,000 over five years, kind of split it up per year and added that in, so it's about $88,000 that we'll recognize in savings.
So will that be reflected in what we hear from you next week on budgets?
No, I'm going to spend more than that. I'm going to spend at least another 90, no, I'm just teasing. No, I don't know if you'll hear about that next week, but it just seemed like, you know, it's, I've never talked about that before, but it's such an important area, you know, I think that's an area that if you, you know, it's good to, to look at your existing plans. And I think it, you know, whether it's, you know, a zippily phone plan or whatever it is, it's good to have some kind of a schedule where you review those. Make sure you're, you're on the most recent plan. A lot of times what can happen too is if you get rid of a building or get rid of something, did you disconnect all the services? Because sometimes that can bite you where you're paying for something that you don't, you don't need. So, so that's just a large part of what that is, is just trying to keep up with, you know, with existing plans and evaluations and making sure we are using the best plans. Like the Verizon, for example, to be honest there, that is something you always want to look at. You struggle to get to those things sometimes with the firefighting that goes on, if you will. But we have a new Verizon rep and, and I'm going to write a very nice letter to her manager because that, she knocked it out of the park. I mean, to bring that to our attention and have those kinds of savings, I mean, that was remarkable.
Thank you. So, so your budget overall will not, will or will not reflect any reduction as you outlined?
No, there won't be any, any real reductions. I think, I think in some cases, like if you look at my software maintenance, I've been able to reduce it a bit there. That actually has usually gone up historically, that has actually gone down. That's a, that's a, in the million dollar range, it's over a million dollars. So that one is going to be, is going to be a couple hundred thousand less. So, yeah. So, I mean, overall, I think the IT budget, I think when you see it next week, it's not looking too bad.
Thank you, and thanks for your diligence. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Probably more than anything is anytime we can realize some cost savings, then it allows us to direct that funds to some of our other, you know, because Shane kind of hit it at the high level, but you know, security, everything that we're doing related to firewalls and software updates. Licensing is also a big one. Licensing compliance is another heavy lift that his office handles for the entire county. And, you know, and a lot of times that's where we start to see, you know, that's where we start having challenges is with the licensing renewals, finding, you know, sometimes there's alternatives, sometimes there's not. You know, so I think you're going to see that reflected in the budget. The nice part is we're trying to find those cost savings where we can to then shift those funds into other priority areas and stay on that forefront.
Yeah, yeah, I would say if you're going to see that it would be the, the software maintenance line and IT, you'll notice that, that dropped a couple hundred thousand. So you're going to need, you'll see some cost savings there. And I think that some of that is definitely reflective of this. And again, that's, that's also taking a look at, you know, what do you need? What do, what do we need? Like the example was those file folder permissions, that's an exact need. We didn't need all the other fluff, we didn't need to spend 100,000. And John was able to find a product very reasonably priced that fills that one inch that we need. And, and that's a large part of what it is too. So we're kind of, you know, picking and choosing and trying to be strategic into what we implement, you know, and really kick tires and look around and, and sometimes seeing what other agencies are doing, you know, as well and do some comparisons before we buy.
I'll say thank you to John.
I will, absolutely, yeah. Any other questions?
Just thank you for, you know, the last few months, I'm not very technologically savvy, right? And you guys were very quick on helping me get set up and, and all my silly basic questions that I had, so thank you guys.
You're very welcome. Well, there's no silly questions. We're, we're there to help everybody and everybody has a job to do. Ours just happens to be IT related. And I always tell people, don't be shy because there really is no stupid questions. We need to get, we need to be able to give you the tools so you can do your job and that's what we're here for. So, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you Shane.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
All right, up next is item F is our work session. And today is going to be a discussion of childcare grant funds. Yeah, come, come on up.
Good morning.
And I think we have two presenters possibly here, one from George Fox, Sean Daly and?
Jen Simonson from YMCA.
YMCA, perfect.
Jen is online. And, oh, and Forrest is here also, Forrest Reinhardt with Northwest Christian.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So you want to just give us a quick overview or if commissioners have questions, we can kick Joey off with that?
Yeah, you bet. So you may recall that Campfire was not able to complete their contract. And so we are expecting 102,453.46 coming back. I think that's the exact number. And because of that, there are two applicants for those funds. And so we're here today to discuss what you would like to do with those funds. And then you can probably make a decision at another time because I don't think today we'll be making a decision.
Couldn't we make, I don't see why we can't make a decision today.
No, I think just because of how time sensitive this is and prior issues that we've had by delaying, I think we'll strive to make a decision today.
And we have not received the funds yet. They are due back to us by next Wednesday, if I am not correct, if I am correct with that.
We can always decide on.
We're anticipating the funds to come back.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, how the board wants to proceed, if a decision is made today, even if it's in general, we'll still have to draft an agreement for, prior to releasing the funds and then that would come back before you for formal action.
Sure.
But yeah, nothing's to prevent the board from making a decision today.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is Campfire is working with accounting to facilitate the transfer of the funds, so hopefully it'll all be back by end of the month, that was the goal.
Okay, cool. So that gives us a little bit of background. Sean, do you want to come on up? And I know there's a few changes to the George Fox from previous grant that we issued to them. So maybe just kind of give us a rough overview on where you're at and then we'll go into Jen.
Yeah, certainly. Good morning, everybody. It's good to see you all again. So the major change that took place over the course of the time since I've seen you last is that we've added another partner who's really become the lead partner in this effort, which is the Northwest Christian Church. So part of that was because we had made a, I'd say a bid to be able to purchase Dundee Elementary School, that, that didn't happen. And then we were going to move over to our property, which is actually on the corner of Cresswell and Villa. And at that point, Pastor David Chase had announced that he wanted to do a childcare expansion of his facility. And then Pastor Chase, Dr. Baker and Scott Parish from ADEC had a conversation. It's like, well, we shouldn't have competing child cares about 100 feet from each other. So, so we banded together as one organization, which is now called the Northwest Early Learning Academy. ADEC has put $2 million towards that, George Fox has put a million towards that, and then we're working together to be able to collectively raise the remainder of the funds with the hope of being open. I'll leave that to Forrest because he's the building guy in this effort. September, so, yeah. So, so still generally on target for what we were trying to be able to do as a collective and it still is supposed to hit all of the confines of what we were doing. 150 to 200 children, ages six weeks to five years being served with spots available for the community as well as for the employees of George Fox and for ADEC. And so when we heard that the Campfire funds were being returned, we were encouraged to put in a request because there are certainly things that we can continue to support over at our effort. Those are in our proposal, ranging from additional planning to security services. I believe that the group is in great shape. We have an advisory panel. We're on the verge of hiring an executive director who we have a lot of faith in and our faculty and staff are looking forward to working on the development of the curriculum. So we're very excited about this work. Like you, the addition of the new partner has been wonderful for us moving forward. And the leadership of all three organizations thanks you for your support because it was the Yamhill County Commission that really kicked off this effort in earnest to be able to help us with bringing childcare to a childcare desert. So that's it.
Can you address the overall costs and where those are at now?
Could I, could I borrow my colleague for this one? Because just, I have, I have moved.
Rough overview.
Yes, no, no, he's better at this because I have moved into a curricular support role. And so, good morning, welcome.
The overall costs for the project will run about eight million total, total. We're hoping to actually pull that down. I'm doing all the due diligence right now. We're going through value engineering on the project. Originally, we were developing at the church, a smaller facility when this conversation happened. We all live in the same neighborhood, all of us are friends, working on things in the community. And that, that, the outcome of that was to expand the size and the footprint. I actually have a drawing of that in its conceptual form and citing, if you'd like to have a copy, I'm happy to leave it. But right now, the estimate is about, at about eight million for the total project. The actual facility part, which is for the kids, our, our overall facility is eight million at the church, about six and a half million of that is for the childcare facility that will specifically be used for that. It's being designed to house 200 children from ages six weeks to, all the way through preschool. And it'll be open 12 hours a day, five days a week, 52 weeks a year.
I just want to jump in here, so we, for the record, we have Sean Daly, George Fox, and we have Forrest Reinhardt Northwest Christian. So I don't know if you guys have that or not. I've got a couple of questions when you're done.
One more while we're on the topic. So originally when these proposals were coming before us, the total was 12 million, correct? And so now we've actually reduced costs down to eight? Okay. Okay, now I'm done.
And, and that is primarily due to not having to purchase land or?
Well, the, I'm not sure what all was involved in the 12. I don't know if that was when Dundee, the school and everything.
Yeah, that, that did additionally, we were hoping to purchase land, the Dundee price would have been, I think, like 3.5 millions. That's not in the equation anymore.
Okay. The other thing is I, I was looking at, so the ask is for 102. So I just, I always like to find out how we arrive at the. So I just, I always like to find out how we arrive at the numbers when we know what, we have, we have a given number that we know exists. And then how we kind of work backwards and make it pencil out. So I just want to make sure that when we look at these numbers that, that there's some, um, I guess some credibility to what each thing would normally cost, given, even if we didn't have a total to work back from. If I'm making myself clear, I'm not sure. But I just want to make sure that when we look at all of these, that we can, we would feel comfortable saying, yeah, security and access for badge access would indeed be eighteen thousand. Do we have, you know, any kind of initial types of estimates on each specific thing? Or is it just a, an overall, uh, guesstimate?
In each of the categories that you have, if you go back to our request from, I think it was, uh, middle of last year, like, I mean, all of these are actually, they cost more. So like, if you wanted it, the, the estimate for Brightwheel, or if you wanted the, the security system that would have to be in place. I mean, these are, uh, they are broad categories, but I mean, like the cap hit for any of these is going to be larger than what this was because the initial request was for, um, like a two hundred and fifteen grand. And so like what I did for this one was took those initial estimates, which for each of these categories, like, and I scaled them back like a percentage wise, based on what was available for the Campfire, uh, amount. So, but like, if, uh, if you'd like me to reproduce the June document, that actually had them all tied to existing prices at the time for software, security, planning, and.
That's fine. I can look at those, but that, that does make sense. Thank you.
Question? Or comment?
Not yet.
Okay. Uh, all right. Thank you, guys. Um, we'll move on to Jen. If somebody could promote her.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Good morning.
One second. We're going to get our audio figured out here. We're still working on it. Hang tight.
Oh, are we good to go?
There we go. We got you, Jen. Okay.
Good morning. Uh, sorry, I can't be there. I had some, uh, transportation issues. My car is not agreeing with me. Um, but, uh, we had, the YMCA has recently did an acquisition of the Campfire programs. And, um, so we are new to serving the Yamhill County area. Um, and we are in the process of, um, we're continuing the summer camp program that, uh, Campfire had held last year, um, as we're trying to, um, get parents used to like the YMCA programs and seeing what the community needs are. Um, what we're finding is that there is a so significant gap in parents being able to afford summer camp. And, um, in the request that I had, I'd sent in, um, ERDC, which is Employment Related Daycare, only covers up to six hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month for families. And so even with the Y doing a twenty percent, that's the maximum we have for our scholarship program. Um, we're still finding that parents can't afford, um, summer camp. So we're looking at ways and opportunities to give parents more access to summer camp if they're working parents and they are relying on childcare to be able to go to work. Um, and we weren't sure what the balance was, um, that was being, uh, brought back from Campfire. And so, um, that's why we had asked for a portion of that for, um, just for, your knowledge, about seventy thousand dollars would cover anywhere from twenty to twenty-eight students for the entire summer, if we did like a sliding scale of what amount of financial assistance they got. And my understanding is this would not be, um, we wouldn't be doing a hundred percent, uh, scholarship for any family, but it would be done on a sliding scale based on, um, documents that they provide of their need.
Can you say what the scale would be? What, um, is it twenty-five to seventy-five percent?
Um, let, I don't have it with me. Um, let me see if I can find that real quick. We've been using our in-house, um, scale along with, um, what the city was using with KOB funds, um, with the scale that they had for the funds that they were using. So like a household size of four that is, um, with their monthly income being around seven, seventy-five hundred dollars. That would be, look like a seventy percent scholarship. And if families were in high need, we could apply both the Y scholarship and additional scholarships on top of that. So we also do for families that are in ERDC where, um, the state would be covering the six hundred and twenty-nine. We'll apply like the YMCA scholarship on top of the balance due after that, um, to help families.
I have a question, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Jen, hi, this is Mary Starett. I had a question about ERDC. At one point there was some instability in that program. Have you heard going forward that those funds are in fact committed, at least through this biennium?
My understanding is that they're still there. I know that about a year ago ERDC had, um, they were taking new families on wait lists. So as long as families are keeping updated with ERDC, um, like their application is updated when their renewal comes up. Um, they are not, they're still, like, they're taking people that have been on the system. I don't know if the waitlist has been opened up. I'm sure as people have moved out of coverage, that they can bring new families in, but I haven't heard of additional funding, but I haven't heard of it going away either. So.
And also the maximum, uh, the cap on for ERDC is six twenty-nine a month. And, um, okay, so you're basically looking for the gap between what it is, um, per week, what ERDC covers. And then based on that would do just partial scholarships for the twenty to twenty-eight students is what the ask would, would essentially cover. And that would be a seventy thousand dollar, uh, price tag for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm basing that off of families that are working and that need to, like, they're using summer camp to be able to go to work. Um, I know there are some families have the flexibility and they're looking for like one week of camp here or there. But I see this need is really for families that are working and that need childcare to be able to go to work. So that's why I was basing it on like a ten or eleven weeks that parents might need.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, no further questions?
None for me. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
All right. Who wants to kick us off on a discussion?
I, I sent an email yesterday, um, with some clarification because I know around the, um, ARPA rules and the obligation deadline and compliance with that. And so I just wanted to, I shared that email if there was any questions about that. There is an allowance because Campfire wasn't able to complete the contract. And so per the terms, we mutually agreed to end that. Um, and so the funds are available. But, you know, I provided some additional information, you know, about, um, re-obligating the funds and still staying compliant with ARPA. So I, I do think it's, is recognizing that, that we can't add to an already existing obligation. You know, we would have to, uh, any awards of what these funds are being returned, we're going to have individual agreements, okay? One agreement or multiple agreements, depending on how this plays out. So, um, if there's questions about the information, we checked in with our auditors this week and, and just wanted to make sure that, uh, we don't get sideways with the recording requirements.
But just to be clear, review of both proposals that we have before us, they're compliant?
I believe so. Um, you know, as long as, because we already have an existing grant with, with George Fox. So if we were, you know, with that program, so anything that we would do, it would be a new agreement for a new component of the project. We can't just incline.
Add on, yes.
The, uh, the obligation.
Perfect, okay. Comments?
I guess too, that is the last agreement that you have for those same items? Or would it just be a new agreement attached to additional funds for those same items? Is that, that, just for clarification on that?
I would have to look at the scope of work and what was included. Um, but I, I, I believe we're still in compliance, I guess it's.
Correct.
Well boiled down, okay. Maybe it's just if, depending on what decisions are made, we would just have to look at it through that lens when we're preparing what the, the agreement.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to kick us off. So we've been working on this for quite a while. Um, unfortunately, I don't like to see these funds come back to us, but I think there is a path forward for, uh, getting these allocated fairly quickly. I've been very vocal in public back when, when George Fox, uh, the original ask was one million. Um, and then part of this got pulled to, uh, fund the Campfire kids. And now, um, I, I'm going to advocate like I did in the past, that the balance of this goes to, uh, George Fox for their childcare program. And pre Commissioner King, uh, just to kind of bring you up to date, at least for my thoughts on the George Fox program and my, kind of my, my appreciation of it is the longevity of this, uh, for the community. It's stepping up a program and education, um, uh, portion of this to, and a facility to really, uh, bring childcare to not just what we're seeing like today for a summer program, but for every year after that, uh, to our community. So I really would advocate for this hundred and two thousand to go to George Fox, um, to help towards that.
So I, I would echo that. And I think for me, the, uh, partnership with Northwest Christian is, is really adding some, uh, some stability to it because we see, for instance, um, what Pastor Case has done and Forrest, what you have done throughout the years in terms of programs in the community, it's unparalleled. It's, it's not only a mega church, but it's a mega church in, in relation to the impact of the community. Whether you go to church there or not, it's, it's got a far reach. The childcare program, as we have seen with the zone and with everything else, and the expansion of that. And, and to me, that just says everything right there. So I appreciate the George Fox concept. I really appreciate the Northwest Christian partnership. So I would, I would be in favor of allocating the funds to this project.
Thanks for bringing up the partnership end of that because the other important part is there's private funds that are, uh, private industry with ADEC that's part of this also, which is another huge factor for me. So I like that also. Commissioner King?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, I'm a fan of both programs, honestly. Um, I think as far as the Y goes, it sounds like there's other forms of revenue, um, coming from the state. And I, we've had the mayor of McMinnville here, who I think has said that she wants to bring back, uh, some fundraising for such things. And I would love to attend those, uh, fundraising events as well. But I, the longevity and the partnerships that not only Northwest Christian brings, but really George Fox, that they invest into Newburgh and just surrounding areas and ADEC, that they've, both organizations have done, along with Northwest Christian for decades at this point. The money is well spent there. So, um, I would, I don't know if we make this motion now or when we move into the, into the, uh, the other business section, but that's where I'll be going.
Perfect.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, I would just make a motion now that we allocate the remaining, uh, childcare ARPA funds to the tune of, what's the exact number, Ken? Hundred and two, two forty?
And there's some cents in there too.
It's.
Yeah, I don't have the number.
I have it. One moment. A second. I know I've got it here on this, um, it's one oh two. I'm so sorry. One oh two four fifty-three point four six. One hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Forty-six cents. So I'd make a motion that we allocate the remainder of the ARPA childcare funds to the tune of a hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents, uh, to George Fox, uh, for their childcare program. Is there any further discussion?
None for me.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will work.
Thank you, Sean.
County Council on that.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you. And thanks, Joya.
Thanks, Joya. Moving on to item G is consent agenda. It's like we have some shotguns as surplus. And we have some minutes on there. Do I have a motion? Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, I didn't mean to put you on the spot either. I'm sorry.
Item H, old business one, consideration of authorizing County Council Christian to sign the final participation forms and related documents to include Yamhill County in the proposed national opioid settlement agreement between litigating parties and Target and Costco, settling and releasing all claims against the named parties arising out of federal multi-district opioid legisla, litigation. This was continued from February seventeenth, February seventeenth. This is just last week, right?
Yeah, a week ago, April.
Yep.
So, yeah, the board, uh, wanted some additional detail on the numbers. And the target settlement is about approximately thirty-six thousand and the Costco settlement is approximately two hundred and sixteen thousand. So just under two fifty combined. And hopefully those will get finalized here within the next week or two.
Fantastic. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None.
None, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Uh, now we're on to I is other business consideration. I one is consideration of approval in the matter of a resolution twenty-five dash zero four dash two four dash one, recognizing April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as Vietnamese American Remembrance Day. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, sometimes we say it at the same time and I want to just make sure that we get that on the record. Uh, moving on to item I two, consideration of approval of a contract between Yamhill County Public Works and Roy Hauck Construction LLC for the Yamhill County twenty twenty-five overlay project in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents, effective upon the county's issuance of notice to proceed through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item I three is consideration of approval of a contract between Yamhill County Public Works and Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for the Yamhill County twenty twenty-five chip seal project in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, effective upon the county's issuance of notice to proceed through September fifth, twenty twenty-five. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And just side note on this, a huge shout out to, uh, Hood River County. We're having to haul chip rock from farther and farther away. For some reason, we're not producing it locally at our rock pits. And Hood River County loaned us one of their pup trailers to hook behind our dump trucks to make us a little bit more efficient. So huge shout out to them. And, and Steve and Mark for putting all that together. Uh, moving on to item I four is consideration of accepting a right-of-way dedication. Uh, moving on to item I four's consideration of accepting a right-of-way dedication deed from Cyclops Properties LLC grantor and Charles J. Dolance and Scotty L. Dolance grantor. I would move approval of this.
Yeah, are there any questions?
Is there any further discussion on this? None, so this was, there was a little bit of confusion as this was coming back around, I think basically what we're doing is we're just trying to be overly cautious, make sure we have all the documentation for the Martha's Vineyards plats that we signed. And do we, does this have to have live signatures?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we'll be able to electronic signature and get this to them by the end of the day today? I just want to make sure if it takes live signatures that we all stick around and get this signed because they've been waiting for.
The only question would be whether or not they would need um wet signatures for recording purposes.
Edwin, do you know if you need live sign?
We can check with the clerk, that would be the, that would.
Okay.
My only question is what they would need for recording purposes.
If if you want, we can make sure that we.
Go ahead and come up, Edwin.
And and you can maybe before you head off to other meetings, we'll have things ready to go and you can sign off on.
Yes, absolutely.
Show the.
Yeah, you can show me.
Oh my goodness. I didn't bring the, no, that's all right, so we.
I grabbed the wrong copy.
I think I've seen it, so I think we're just looking at a legal size paper for the uh road dedication. But we have it.
We have it.
We have it. Okay, we'll try to do our best to get this squared away, because I know you guys have been waiting for it. Yeah, I understand and. We'll get it squared away, appreciated, Edwin, okay, I move approval on this if I didn't already, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes and we will get right on top of this, uh, nobody go away until we hear from Christian or Ken for signatures today. Um, item I five is consideration of approval of amendment to the agreement with Locum Tenens Board Order fifteen dash two six nine between Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Locum Tenens retroactively effective April eighth, twenty twenty-five.
This is as we continue to recruit for psychiatric mental health nurses and medical providers, this is in the interim and it's difficult to recruit these, so this is basically giving us cover. And this is just an amendment to an existing contract, so I would move approval.
Motion's been made, any further discussion?
None.
None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. J is public hearings, there is none, we are on to announcements. Commissioner King, kick us off.
You, uh, County College last week, which was predominantly HHS, um, talking about uh just a big overlay, but. It's been helpful because uh been doing quite a bit of orientations, Mr. Commissioner Johnson and I, in fact, we had one on Monday. Community support, uh, another two hours there, Veteran Services and the Atticus House and so on, so. Uh, Newburgh City Council was on Monday, they had a presentation from TVFNR and uh trying to remember what was else was on their agenda now, but anyways. Tuesday, I went to a bid build mid Willamette Valley, they were predominantly uh trying to replicate the missing middle housing. Coalition they put together for Newburgh back, I don't know, maybe three or four years ago, um, with Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties, um, and the cities that were in. And several, most of the cities that were there, um, all were in those counties, uh, it was put on by Sedcor, Missing Middle Housing Coalition, uh, COG. Several other of the those uh partner groups there, really interesting. Commissioner Johnson and I attended the Dayton Footbridge Ribbon Cutting. Uh, yesterday was a big day of driving, I went back and forth to McMinnville, to Newburgh, to Sheridan, I don't know, five, six times to. Did a tour of the Alchemist Jam, all you guys talked about that, that was mostly your your department, um. Lips are um our parole meetings with Jessica Beach and Sheridan Fire and yeah, just kind of all over the county yesterday, so it's a good day. I love I love driving across, it's so beautiful and just really feel like I get to know much more on the granular level of what's going on around town, so.
So anything to add on the Sheridan Fire situation?
I mean, nothing that's not already out there, I mean, I I feel like I have a little bit better of a handle on it, I'm very supportive of them, I've I got some things I'd like to. Kick some ideas I'm trying to kick around right now, but uh working on for now, so.
Because we're in the middle of discussions and I've been speaking to the chief yesterday, had a more conversations in terms of the uh ambulance service area coverage and potential, what is the county's role? So anything you have to add to it, we would appreciate because we're.
Yeah.
We've been working on this, so anything you have.
Yeah, I'm trying to get caught up to speed before I make some opinions uh too far down the road, so yeah, I think as I get some opinions, I'll I'll let you know.
Okay, great, uh, yeah, uh, was in touch with the chief yesterday, just really our concerns are what is the county's. Role in trying to make sure that ambulance service area at Sheridan is covered. And you know, what are our contingency plans, so we've been in, you know, conversations with county council and with OHA and with the chief and the chief let me know yesterday that they're, you know, status quo right now. And uh that their their plans are not to default on on their obligations there, so. We're just keeping an eye on that and looking at what are what the requirements are and what are what our options are, but we fully support them. And obviously legislatively, it doesn't look like that that's gonna be a a fit. Uh, Oregon Fatality Review Committee, and that is a pilot project through OHA where we're looking at uh local fatalities and we did address the uh overdose of an of an older. County resident and looked at some of the gaps we could, we could plug to make sure that our older folks are getting some kind of messaging regarding the potential. Effects of overdosing, Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee was yesterday and we talked about a DUI campaign. That is going to be ramping up in July or August and we looked at ideas, we were talking about billboards, my suggestion was we have a picture of the sheriff. In front of an empty jail cell that says we have room for you in our jail because unfortunately, we've got twenty-five percent of our of our um. Uh DUIs, at least the arrests, are out of county and we have a huge uptick when we can arrest people, when we have a dedicated officer. But if we don't, then we can't nab as many drunk drivers, so we want to talk about raising awareness, how to address the folks we are nabbing and hopefully to get the message out that you don't want to do that in this county.
Yeah.
So we talked about that, uh, we also talked about, uh, oh, I met with Captain Whitlow. And Newburgh Animal Shelter folks, we were looking at making some revisions to the contract, making sure that they are covered there and we can address some of their concerns around dangerous dogs. Affordable Housing Corporation, we talked about some of the money that's out there with the Newburgh Community Excise Tax. And the Oregon Healthy Homes and Community Development Block Grants to get money into the community for rehabbing some homes to keep folks in their in their um in their homes. And uh I think Joya sent out information about the what we funded at Chamecada. For the um the childcare education grant and we're trying to get some more folks. And and let them know that they can get college credit childcare and seven hundred and fifty, seven thousand five hundred dollars stipend. Early learning uh at uh CCO, we talked about how there can be partnerships with WESD to bridge some of the gaps with uh Medicaid funding. Also, we talked about the dire shortage of PCPs in Yamhill County, we're down nineteen, more and more of them are retiring, that is the primary care physician, so it's really putting us in a. But but not unlike any other community, so we really have to be concerned about recruiting and hopefully making it a a pleasant. Place for people to want to come and set up a medical practice, that's all I have.
Fantastic, last Thursday was Fair Board meeting, we uh had our brand new uh Fair Board member Craig Brown join us, so that went well. Uh, the sheriff came and presented to the board for the Man Up Crusade, which is uh brings um, it'll be one one day of the rodeo. And it'll encourage our fairgoers and staff to wear purple that day in show of um. It's for uh.
Domestic.
Yeah, domestic violence and show awareness to that, um, I thought he presented very well, it's not a super new program, it's uh, I think it started in Colorado. Um, but I'm really looking forward to that, the Fair Board did agree that they would do um uh one day of the rodeo, they're just not sure which day yet. Um, but that's coming. Monday night was uh Sheridan City Council, uh, recology increased their rates a little over two percent to Sheridan, I imagine that you can start seeing that coming around to all the other different cities. Cynthia gave an update uh for transit and where we're at with uh fair versus fearless and how the timing, um, what the timing is gonna be on that. Dayton Ribbon Cutting for the Bridge Zonement, that was super uh quick and actually met uh. An old fair ambassador from last year was there and she is now the Yamhill County Dairy Princess, so that's super cool and uh we're gonna do, uh, I offered to her to join the fair ambassadors because we're gonna do two new parades this year, one's gonna be. Uh, the UFO Festival coming up and then Cinco de Mayo Parade in Dayton, so I offered for her to hitchhike on the back if she needed a ride on the fair truck. McMinnville City Council, they discussed uh zoning changes for property out on Stratus, uh, Stratus Avenue, seemed pretty, uh, I thought it went well. Um, some concerns over uh traffic capacity and safety, but ultimately, they ended up approving the zone change. Our very own. First reading, okay, so not quite a done deal yet, but moving in the right direction, cool. Um, our very own Jason with HHS, Jason Henness, um, gave an update on the costs or the community outreach services that uh we have an agreement with for McMinnville. I thought that went pretty good, there's some, a few tough questions um that the council had for him, um, but I think ultimately. Nothing that can't be addressed, uh, today, this morning, had a a short meeting with uh actually. A tour with Forest Glen Repair, which is right on the outskirts of Mac as you go over the Third Street Bridge, and they brought on a new line of construction equipment. When I rolled in there, it wasn't too far behind and our own Public Works was there, so they're checking out the new equipment that that came in there also, so that was kind of cool. As Commissioner King mentioned, uh, we went to uh Wednesday, we went to the Alchemist Jam to see how our grant funds are being put to use. And they have a new dough stretcher, is it called a dough stretcher, laminator? It's pretty cool, it basically what it is made them more efficient to where they can make more pastries and sell more pastries and now they're also looking for a new place to move down Third Street if Mr. Morris knows of any. Empty places there for lease or sale. Um, and.
Delicious.
And this was delicious and. The funniest part was listening to Commissioner Stare enjoy a nerd out on what kind of flowers do you guys use and it became like this five-minute conversation of the kinds of flowers that. And I'm just like, okay, I get my flower at Costco, so, but they're like mentioning off all these.
To talk, yeah.
When do you feed your starter?
Yeah, when you. Well, they come in every night, by the way, Alchemist, they come in every night and check on their.
Starter.
Their sourdough starter, and so then there's another conversation that got going, it was awesome.
It was very fun.
Chat with the chair next Thursday, um, and then tonight we have Senator Starr and Rep. Elmer, who will be at the Willamina Fire Station this evening for a town hall starting at six P M. And then uh Sheriff's Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, Juliet's house on.
Right.
Tomorrow, yeah, um, they both coincide with each other, so you're gonna have to pick or try to hit both of them. And next Monday kicks off budget season. That's all I got. Yeah, well, for Ken, but behind the scenes, it never stopped, yeah. And, oh, that's all right, I'll un-hit it, there we go.
I gotta be a little quicker, um, just had a quick question, um, had a uh COG reached out. Historically, we've had water task force or water things that have been in the area of liaison in years past. It's not on the current, because I just don't think there's been any activity with the task force, um, but COG has reached out, it sounds like they're having meetings with uh trying to organize some meetings with cities. And everyone else to talk about water. Um, just wanted to put it out there, if if there's a commissioner would like me to forward the invite to, or if you want to make a decision or uh.
If there's general consensus, I will take that on as another liaison duty.
Okay, I used to do the uh Yamhill County Water Task Force early on and then uh that pretty much. Went the way of the dodo bird and we did have a lot of kind of innovative type things for for a number of years, but be happy to.
I've been talking to a lot of my liaison cities about water, um, when I've been meeting with them, but I know your COG is uh was one of your.
So is that a yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I doesn't mean I can't still.
Thank you for taking that on, thank you.
For the paper, go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily, I don't know if this is something new or if it's something standard, but they reached out and so I'll forward the calendar invite.
Would you mind keeping me updated on?
Absolutely, well, I I so just to follow up with that, just because we have liaison duties doesn't mean everybody can be engaged with it, so.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Yep.
Which is what you learn at those, where you keep me up to date and.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, are you done, Ken?
That's all I.
Commissioner, you got anything?
Just heard back from the clerk, we will need your signatures on the actual original copy of the dedication deed.
Okay, all right, so nobody leave until you sign that today.
And then we had talked about scheduling an executive session next Thursday morning starting at eight thirty, just want to make sure that that we'll get that noticed.
Everybody's good with that? Okay. Yep, yep, I'm ready and that'll wrap us up at eleven oh two, thank you to everybody that stuck around. No yawns, it's still early in the morning, you can stretch, it's okay.